September ninth, and this is a regular school board meeting. Janet, could you do role call?
Charles Blacklance.
Here.
Reed Campbell.
Here.
Tom Hagland. Sue Kern.
Here.
Reed Nelson.
Here.
Bob Nystrom.
Here.
Five of six present.
Thank you. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up, the approval for the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Nelson, a second from Director Nystrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Let's see, your public input. This is the time when people from the public want to come forward. Anyone from the community has a question or things to talk about. Seeing none, we'll move right along. The building project update. Brandon.
Why is this not showing up? There we go. Perfect. All right. Good evening. We'll give you an update on the current wave one projects as well as the wave two projects. Try to get you out of here in a timely fashion, so I'll just run through the status updates on the projects. If you have any questions, just feel free to jump in and ask questions. So again, wave one projects, Brainerd High School, New Baxter Elementary, Forest View, Harrison and Nisswa. Give you a status update on those. And then we'll just report collectively on Lowell Riverside, Garfield and Baxter as far as the wave two project updates. Brainerd High School started construction August 26th. They started on the site demo, removing the pavement, the concrete, started working on the building pad. That's all the dirt we see out there getting hauled in and imported, as well as rerouting the electrical and the fiber that's out there. Next week, we're actually going to start on excavating the footings. So see some, seems a little backwards. You haul in dirt and then you scoop it back out again, but that's the process. You get all your field bulked in. It's efficient that way. And then you go back in and excavate your footing. So we'll see them start to excavate footings and they'll tap in for the new fiber tap and then be working on utility excavations and the connections for the sanitary storm, for the storm sewer as well. Moving forward, we're going to work on, we still have our list, steps to the lower lot and then working on developing any of those little LTFM projects along the way here. And to date, we haven't used any contingency yet, haven't written any change orders on the project. And we know they're coming. We have some plan review stuff back from the state, so there's some issues on there. We'll have some change orders to the contractors for, but so far, so good. It's been going well. Found a few things buried underneath the parking lot we had to get rid of, but nothing too extravagant. New Baxter Elementary, working on the steel erection, a little bit different from when we took the group tour out there. We see the concrete boxes was the gymnasium. Right now, we have both levels of the steel erected. The joists are set and they'll be working on, you probably can't see, I guess you can see it on the gymnasium, all the little uprights. That's the fall protection for the roofers. So they've been working on the roofing and then inside the building on mechanical, electrical and plumbing underground work. And next week, the work will just continue for the underground and then start prepping the concrete slab work as well. We're going to be moving forward. We're starting to work on the gymnasium schematics, start to lay out a few different options. Hopefully bring something to the board here in about three, four weeks and start to look at some of them options on exactly how that building's, the addition sits and the size of it and everything else for some feedback. So going well so far.
Brandon, question on the gymnasium then. Would we have put that wall in there, that precast wall in between the two gymnasiums if we would have known?
It's a bearing wall where it is, so that wall would have to remain. Yeah. Few different ways to do it, you know, otherwise it could have been accomplished maybe via curtains or something, but you know, we were in some budget constraints early on, so that's kind of the way it laid out. But yeah, so that wall will just stay there and we'll add on to it. So we're building three walls on the new addition. And then 85% of the contingencies remaining, so doing pretty good. And a lot of that's due to the code review and some of the stuff that's come up front. So. Forest View Middle School, working on the punch list for the interior work, getting some little bit of corrective work done. And then they had some temporary doors and some temporary hardware in there. So within the next coming weeks, we should be seeing some new doors. Some of those existing doors are kind of in odd color if you've been in there and noticed it. So those will be getting changed out. And also working on efficient use of drop offs. It's been going very well. Tremendous amount of cars on the first day, so they were backed up. It was crazy. I don't know how many were there, 200 some vehicles, something like that on the first day of school, so it was pretty wild. But as the first, as the first week went on, every day just got better and better. I don't know where it was at today, but last Friday, I think there's only like two vehicles that ended up spilling out on the Knollwood. So very, very good. And we've had nothing but positive feedback from it. So matter of fact, Charles pointed out something too. We're going to get back with the city of Baxter. Might need to do a little bit of additional striping indicating the north turn lane. It's going to be come around the corner into the north entrance and all of a sudden you're like in the turn lane to turn into the north entrance. So we'll go back and visit with the city of Baxter and might have to put some additional striping or something on, out on Knollwood to remedy that. So moving forward, we'll be working on the punch list on that as well. There's still some metal panels that need to be installed out there. It'll probably be about four weeks or something. Nothing that's critical, just kind of basically where the big Brainerd blue B goes and you kind of see a sheet rock wall looking assembly there. It gets wrapped in blue metal panels, so.
Have you heard any feedback on how the new security entrance is working or anything?
Only heard positive. So that's all that's coming across my desk, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Same with you.
Yep. Yep. It's been good. I know the first day is, was it the first day? No, it was, I think, the open house. There was some issues. They didn't have some parameters set correctly so the doors weren't operating, but it's been, been, been great so far, so.
Question on the south end of Knollwood, the roundabout, the new roundabout. Are the buses able to get around that roundabout without going up on the center portion of it? One day I was, either I picked up or dropped off my child and I was just going through there and I saw the bus go up, the rear tires up on the roundabout, around the center part. Then I noticed there's other tire marks there, which probably was when they laid the asphalt, I'm assuming, but just making sure that they're able to get through there without cutting that off.
Yeah, that's news to me. We'll dig into that and check in to see if there's any issue.
And it was just the one bus.
For some reason, I remember when we talked about it, the way the roundabout was designed, that the buses, bigger vehicles would use that cement to get around there.
Oh.
Yeah, they do make a surmountable curb on the inside.
Yeah, it looks like it's easy to get up on.
Yes. It's designed to do that. I don't know, I suppose if they're really cut wide or something, they could probably...
Erica, did you want to say something?
I was just going to add, those were remaining roundabouts. And it was discussed with the district, with the district at the time when we were designing that, that those, the restriction, they are smaller. And so that's how those operate is, those buses use that middle section.
Okay. So that's supposed to.
Yep.
Makes sense. Thank you.
And then contingency, we're at the end of the project. We did take care of some additional concrete work out there and then some bituminous works. We ate up the contingency, but we still have some money left from some under budget scenarios. So moving forward, we're still looking at the second level flooring. Can come back to some pricing for that as well as, there's still some exterior sidewalks. They're pretty chewed up out there. A lot of the joints are starting to scale back from the salt and the water and the hard winters. So we're going to get a good assessment of that and see if we can't maybe just get some of that taken care of next spring, so.
Brandon, when you get some estimates on the second level flooring, are you going to look at a couple of different products so the Board of Education has an opportunity to decide if they want terrazzo or if they want to stay with tile?
Yep. Yep. We can look at some different products up there, whether it's VCT, carpet, terrazzo. We'll come with some, some options. It'll just be, I'm thinking, estimates for now to help guide us in the right direction. And then once we hone it in, we can get some firm pricing on it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Nisswa Elementary, all these projects are kind of in the same stage. Makes sense. They started at the same time. Again, working on structural steel, the joists are going in. They are working on the gymnasium roofing. And then the exterior framing, you can actually see it in the picture on the very bottom on the top of the concrete, they actually have the steel stud track shot down onto the concrete, getting in preparation for the framing. It gets covered with steel and brick and stone and metal on the backside. Next week, again, most of that work is just going to continue, some structural steel detailing as well as the slab, the concrete work for the second floor. And then basically, we're looking at getting all of these buildings enclosed here by the end of November so we can work through the winter on and we'll start pumping some heat and work through the winter and get them wrapped up by, right around springtime, so. Nisswa, 87% of the contingencies remaining, so we're sitting pretty good there as well. We get the structure up and most of the contingency is intact, so doing very well. Harrison Elementary, same thing, structural steel erection. I wanted to show you some interior pictures. I know everybody probably drives by that one around Wesby probably the most frequently. So this is in the kitchen and receiving area. Getting me going and dig up all the dirt and start installing pipes. That's the mechanical, electrical and plumbing underground work. Working on roofing on the gymnasium, same thing in closing the buildings. And we can see on this one, you can actually see the steel studs and the, and the, and the gyms. Some on the exterior wall. So moving forward, we're going to look at some LTFM options if there's any stones that we didn't turn over on that existing building. We really, we really tore into it pretty extensively, but we're going to take another look at anything out there that we may have missed and see if there's anything else that needs to be covered as we go. And 92% of the contingencies remaining on that project. Wave two projects consists of Lowell Elementary, Garfield Elementary, Riverside Elementary and Baxter Early Childhood. Right on schedule, at the last board meeting, we approved the design development with some of the changes recommended by the board. We took note of that and incorporating them into the, into the plans. We were going to try to push forward with conditional use permit with the city of Brainerd this month for September, but they had really packed agenda and requested that if it wasn't critical, if we can move it back into October, that fits fine still within our design schedule. So we figured we'd work with the city of Brainerd on that and push it back a month, we'll, we'll be okay.
Can you get us the dates for that, when, when all of those meetings happen so we can get them on our calendar?
Yep. Yep. We haven't established them yet. We are probably going to try to establish a meeting at the end of September just to get them up to speed with where we're at with the projects. Not an official COP meeting, but just let them know where we're at and get any initial feedback so we can get ahead of any changes. Then construction documents are due to us November 13th and we'll look at sending them out to bid shortly thereafter. Any questions?
How was the drop off and pickup been for Harrison?
I have heard nothing on Harrison yet. We're still utilizing basically the existing configuration. We need to, most of that will get reworked in, in next summer. Lot of that, the street will get vacated and the parking lots will be built and a little bit more of that, those buildings will come down that are standing there. We kind of have our temporary construction office. So that will, that'll all happen next summer. So we're just using existing configuration for right now.
Because when, when, on the first day of school, I was at Lowell and a police officer stopped by to say hi and he had just commented that on that day at least, it was pretty crazy in front of Harrison. He assumed it was just because it was his first day. That's probably the case, but I was just wanting to make sure that it continues to be a safe drop off for, for students crossing and that type of thing.
Yeah, I've been there. I've been there a few times at the 8:00 AM mark. Haven't, I guess, watched the buses drop off or anything. It does get busy out on Oak, which it kind of always has. Probably a little more amplified now with construction and some parking. A lot of that's getting kind of eaten up a little bit, but we really haven't heard anything negative come back from Harrison yet.
Great. Good.
Yep.
Looks good. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thanks, Brandon.
Next up, the approval of the minutes for the August 26th regular meeting.
I saw move for approval of the regular meeting minutes?
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Campbell and a second from Director Blacklance. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, the consent calendar. I want to bring up the Brainerd FFA field trip. It was indicated that there would be either one to 16 or one to eight ratio with, with student and a chaperone. And I think we should probably, I've talked with Superintendent Larson, we should go with the one to eight. And so Mr. Nelson would have to find someone to help him out.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
The 16 would be a lot.
Because they're going to Chicago for several nights.
Yeah.
And it's like three nights. And there could be girls and boys.
Yes. I agree. And so we've kind of talked about that, so that's what we're looking at. We're to approve the consent calendar, it would be one to eight for Mr. Nelson's trip.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Nystrom, a second from Director Campbell. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Site reports. Mr. Murtha and Craig Ruzek.
Okay, good evening. We're at item eight regarding the request for approval of the BHS science curriculum and a real presentation by Mr. Ruzek. What we're asking for is recommendation for approval of BHS biology. The BHS biology teachers have completed their curriculum review. The Department of Teaching and Learning and the District Advisory Committee recommends the approval of Biology 602 and 603 as district adopted curriculum. The 2019 Minnesota K-12 academic standards in science set the expectations for achievement in science for GATE's K-12 students in Minnesota. The standards are grounded in the belief that all students can and should be scientifically literate. Scientific literacy enables people to use scientific principles and processes to make personal decisions and to participate in discussions of scientific issues that affect society. Thus, graduates should be prepared for college and career opportunities. The standards describe a connected body of science and engineering knowledge acquired through active participation in science experiences. These experiences include hands-on laboratory activities rooted in science and engineering practices. The standards are based on current science education found in next generation science framework, which emphasizes the inclusion within the science standards, curriculum and instructional framework, three dimensions. Scientific and engineering practices, cross-cutting concepts and disciplinary core ideas. Full implementation of the standards is required by 2023 and 24 school year. As evidence of the completion of the curriculum improvement process, we've submitted the biology curriculum map and Mr. Ruzek, sorry, my old boss. Mr. Ruzek is here to talk us through the work with his team.
So I take it we're ahead of schedule?
Very much so.
Yes. Cool.
All right. Thank you. I'm here to talk about biology at Brainerd Senior High School. And I am one of five biology instructors in the district at the high school level. I share this role with Jennifer Klukatsky, Leticia Lasky, Aaron Litzinger and Kristen Zentke. We are currently teaching 12 sections of biology at the 12, I'm sorry, at the 10th grade level. We also see, teaching the same course, two sections at the ninth grade honors level. And in our catalog, course catalog, they're considered Biology 602 and 603. If you were to go to our course registration guide, this is what you would see. This is what our students are reading and looking at when they sign up for this course. At the end, they do take an MCA three science test. It's administered in the spring, in May. And we prepare students for that all year long in the standards that we address. As you can see, the major topics have been underlined. I won't read those to you, but those are tied to the standards. Outcomes, we're, we're trying to hit a target and we, what do we want students to know and be able to do? And so what we've done is we've looked at all the Minnesota State standards and we've identified nine of them as our power standards. The standards, we, you can find in our team drive, what we've done is we've actually highlighted them. And I'll just take, well, we've got this linked. We can take you there.
Well, he finds that there are 36 standards for science and life sciences and they've identified nine as ones that stand out of significance.
So if you go to our, our curriculum map, which is on our team drive, we do have all of those highlighted, so as you can see here, one of them is highlighted. So that's very easy to access. I'd like to just go over these standards with you. I won't read them to you, but I'll give you the main idea. The first one is about testable hypothesis and informing hypothesis and about experimentation. We don't meet these in just one, one time. We cover these throughout the year and they have many times to meet these standards. So that would be our first of nine. DNA, genes and chromosomes. We also have one connected ecosystem and the transfer of energy. Another one would be human activity and some things that can happen as a result of human activity and changing natural ecosystems. We deal with the ecological risks and benefits of biotechnology. That's one of our power standards. As is evolutionary relationships among species. We also deal with the finite resources that we have and look at basically natural selection and the idea of natural selection and the advantages and disadvantages, if it's advantageous or disadvantage in the new environment. We talk about vaccines, we talk about antibodies. We do have an immune system section that we deal with in one of our power standards. There is also a very big connection with organ systems and maintaining homeostasis in organisms. And that would be the nine. When you look at these nine, the big question is, you know, how do we, how do we get to these? So we sat down as a biology group and we looked at three things that really helped us make our decision. One basically would be endurance. You know, do you need these knowledge and skills beyond a single test day? You don't just test on it, you know, you want this to continue in their, in their future education. Also, we look at leverage. Is it, can we use it in many different disciplines, across disciplines? And then also for readiness, does it prepare them for the next science class, for their future in, in science education? So we looked at those three things as we sat down and that's how we made the decision on those nine. And like I said, they're highlighted in our curriculum map. And I'm not sure. There we go. Okay. And then one thing that's been mentioned is the next generation science standards. We're keeping that in the forefront right now as we are tweaking our curriculum every year. This has been, we haven't adopted this, but on the other hand, we've actually cross-referenced it on our curriculum map. We have Minnesota State standards, but then we also cross-referenced the next generation science standards along with it. And so you can see that on our curriculum map. We've worked through that to kind of keep that because it's very possible that could be, be the future. A lot of, a lot of districts are going in that direction.
The state of Minnesota, when it did its rewrite of the science standards, what they did was they embraced the next generation science instructional framework. They did not adopt specifically all of the standards, but there's an instructional framework about experimental learning, hands-on, cross-cutting concepts, those things that we identified. Those are parts of the Minnesota standards. Minnesota, as it's done in other content areas, tends to slightly modify the standards. So conceptually, they're very closely aligned. Instructionally, they are very much aligned, but Minnesota likes to put its own stamp on things. And so there's a little bit difference between those two levels.
One thing that we've put a lot of work into in our biology curriculum at Brainerd High School is assessment. And formative assessment is very important, summative assessments. And the thing that we're working on is doing, being common. We're common across all, no matter what teacher you visit, they're going to be teaching the same standards and we're going to be taking the same, the students will be taking the same tests and they'll be commative, formative and summative assessments. One thing that we did is that we are doing a standards-based assessments. When you look at one of our tests, we have, we have, we have questions that are directly tied to the standards. And we could have, we'll have three to six questions aligned with each state standard on a test. The student will take the test and on that test, they will get a test score, but they'll also get a standard score. And we're asking that the students accurately answer two-thirds of the questions for each standard to show proficiency. So when they get to a standard question, we say, okay, it's not going to be any more difficult than any other question, but we want you to know it's tied to our state standards. Now, the student will answer the question and we will look at that. And if they get two out of the three, they've met proficiency. So the big question is, what if they don't meet proficiency? In the past, we let kids move on. You know, you would test, you get the grade you get, you move on. What we've decided to do is we actually make sure that we go back and relearn that. With our new schedule at the Brainerd Senior High School, there's a win opportunity on Wednesdays and Thursdays. And Thursday is, is kind of science. We've been given that time slot. And we'll ask a student to come in and what they'll do is what's called a remediation. We have a video, we have some questions, we have one-to-one on, with a, one-to-one work with a teacher. And then what they'll have the opportunity to do is relearn that particular standard that they were, they weren't proficient in. And it's kind of interesting how this has worked because we don't approach it as a punishment. We tell the students, this is important. We need you to, we need you to be proficient in these standards. And it's amazing how many kids, they, they don't, I haven't, I haven't heard anybody complain. They want to do it. They want, oh, I, I want to get this. And they will come in, they'll work with you and then we'll give them a retest. And then if they show, if they earn two out of the three possible questions on that remediation, we go back in the grade book and we change that. So we're not letting kids slip through the cracks. I feel really proud of this, that our biology department has developed this because we are saying the state standards are important. We want you to be proficient in them. And if you're not proficient, we're going to do something about it. But we're here not as a punishment, we're here to work with you. And that's a real, kind of a plug for our win as well. I know it doesn't work in all disciplines, but for science, it's really a great match because we have these opportunities within the school day to meet with our kids. So that's one real positive thing that I've seen. The other thing is, we try to stay as common as possible. We do what is called a common objective sheet. So in biology, we give our students an objective sheet based on the standards. They will complete that by their first test. And so if they've definitely done this, done the objective sheet, they understand the objective sheet, they should be successful on the test. I have A students have to come back, you know, consistently A-plus students, they come back. They have, they, they might miss a state standard. They'll come in, they'll remediate, but we don't let anybody fall through the cracks. So that would be a special piece that we have in biology.
For the, for the videos you referenced, are they able to bring those home or access them at home?
Yes. Now, and that'll even be on later in my presentation, now that we are one-to-one, we have Google Classroom, we can put all these videos right on Google Classroom. Kids will have access to them if they have internet access and they can do that on their own. The only thing that we ask is that they do the remediation with us so that we can monitor that. We don't want to just give the quiz out to the student to do on their own. We would like them to do that in front of us. We'd also like to have a conversation with them because we can clear up a lot of things by having a one-to-one conversation or even just a quick conversation with a student. I've had some students had to do remediation a couple of times. And we also look at alternative ways to meet proficiency. Sometimes kids... Sometimes kids won't do the multiple, can't do the multiple choice. So we have a conversation. We go another route to learn the standard and learn it well and show that they've understood the concept. But yeah, they can go right online. We have them posted.
Great, thank you.
But then when they take the state test, it's a multiple choice, right? Still.
It is. Yep, at the end of the year, the MCA is a multiple choice.
So are all your tests online, too?
We just went, last year, we went to Google Docs where we actually have, and they really, it's very secure. There's something called Beta where they've secured it. And so we are delivering all of our tests electronically.
So they get the results right away?
Exactly.
Nice, yeah.
And we get the results right away, you know? There are going to be some written, you know, there's going to be some written opportunities. I'll have to score those separately. Because we don't make it all multiple choice. But the multiple choice section, they can see when they're in media, yeah.
Yeah, I'm very proud of our science department. I think we have one of, probably the strongest science department around. And I'm not proud of it because of me. I'm proud of it because of all the work you guys do. So kudos to you.
Well, thank you so much. Equity is an issue for us. We do try to address underrepresented populations. This is a picture of Rosalind Franklin. Without her, we wouldn't have known what the structure of DNA is. She was a major contributor to that. We try to connect things with Minnesota and with Minnesota American tribes. So we do try to weave those into our curriculum. Technology, we do use Google Classroom, one-to-one this year. We're in our second week of it. Google Classroom is, I can speak for myself. It's been very, it's been a very good way to deliver material to students. They have access to it. It's a very organized way, and it's really nice a way to communicate with students. Again, we use Google Forms, not Google Docs, but it's called Google Forms to administer tests. And it's really slick. We can make modified tests for kids who have special requirements for testing. And they don't, we don't even have to, they don't even know that they're getting that special test because we can send out the test to those individuals. And they take the test, just like everybody else. And nobody knows if someone is doing the modified version. We are doing, we're in OERs. We've been in that. It's been on the forefront. We know it's been coming. Our current goal is to develop two to three units per semester, these open educational resources. District website, Mr. Murth has done a great job of giving resources for us, putting up on the website and places for us to go. It's an ongoing process. Just like, everything in biology is an ongoing process. We're always trying to improve our remediations. We're trying to improve our curriculum. And every year, we're just going to get that much better. So that's what we have for the technology piece. Do you have questions?
What about AP Biology? Do we still offer that, right?
We do, yep. Currently, we are teaching, I'm sorry, we have three sections.
But that's a separate curriculum. That's the.
Yep.
Yeah, curriculum that comes from the AP people.
Yeah, evidence of any AP course would be the AP audit, the documents submitted to the college board for approval of the course. We don't run them through, conceptually, it's the same. What are your outcomes? How will you assess it? What are your instructional practices? But what's different is we'll use their format and their recommendations for that.
Okay, so is that online or is it more book-driven?
They use a lot of technology. They definitely, well, they have a textbook. And I'd probably have to ask Ms. Palmer to come speak to that in more detail. But I'm aware that she uses a lot of technology.
Okay, so that's separate staff that teaches that.
She's been using Google Classroom for years, so.
Do they do that at a different grade, then?
Do which?
The AP Biology?
You can actually be a 10th grader. You have to meet the prerequisites to take it. But yes, we have all high school ages, but they have.
So some people maybe take Biology and then take AP Biology?
Yep, it's one of those electives that they can take. I've seen a 10th grader take AP Bio before, but it's more usually a junior, senior class.
What percentage reach proficiency in the first try?
What I tell my students, and I'm not fudging any data here, if you try, 100% will make it. The only kids that don't make it are the ones that won't come in. Every student that ever has come into my classroom meets proficiency. It's, so it's really a good, I try to tell kids that you can do this. Anybody who's ever tried has done it. The only ones that don't are the students that don't come in. And that's maybe four or five. We have a very low failure rate in Biology.
How often do you have lab in class?
We try to do a lab with every unit. So I would say once every two weeks. So we try to tie a lab. We just had a lab last week about the scientific method.
And do you, you probably do those during the longer class periods?
Yeah, can't say enough about win for a science session. It's just perfect because we got that big chunk of time. You don't have to get started and clean up. It's like, you get started, you can carry out the entire lab. Yep. So we do a good job of scheduling our labs on Wednesdays or Thursdays.
Mr. Rezak, you did a wonderful job. Thank you with your presentation. You boil it down very easily for me to process. Thank you. I also appreciate the opportunity to give students that might be processed a little bit differently, maybe a little slower processor. I'm one of those students and was one of those students. And the flash of anxiety I had back to my high school and college years of Biology wishes I might have had some of the opportunities you provide your students. So I appreciate your forethought with that and the support of our students.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for your labs. I'm glad that you have a lot of labs. I did have a question with regard to evolution. You know, Darwin's theory was done in the mid-1800s, and it's never been proven, so I'm wondering why we're still teaching it.
It's kind of interesting. It's Darwin's theory. He had no, he never saw DNA as, he never could have deserved a DNA. The interesting thing about a theory is we have to get, we need information to disprove it. There hasn't been any information to disprove the theory of evolution. As we've learned more about DNA, we've only actually solidified it. It's based on observation. It's based on fact, and it has not, if it is, if we ever find evidence to disprove it, and then we would amend that because that's what you can do with a theory, but there hasn't been any evidence presented at this time.
And then with regard to your Christian students, then how do you do that? How do you tell them? Because they are taught not to agree with that, so.
This is not contrary to Christian belief. This is science, and science doesn't deal with belief, a belief system. We deal with facts, and we basically present this. It doesn't have to be in a dilemma or a concern with someone to choose between evolution or Christianity. That's not what this is about. You can actually embrace both. And we actually, it's my responsibility as a teacher to teach science, not teach religion. And there's a place for both of those. But in school, in separation of church and state, school is a place to teach evolution. And it actually is a well-written theory. Explains why we behave the way we do, why we have the anatomical features that we do. It's a really, it's not just a one-teaching kind of thing. It's an overarching idea, theme of Biology. It's not just one unit. It's all year long that we teach evolution.
It's also explicitly identified in the state standards. If we deviate from those standards, we would not be fulfilling our promise to the community that the standards represent.
Yeah, we'd want my student in Brighter, Minnesota, to have the same education as someone in YZeta. They're teaching to the same standards as we are, and these have been looked at by the state. And we have a responsibility to teach these.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Very good.
Great job.
Thank you.
Good presentation.
I think I'm next on the agenda.
Yes, you are. I just figured you'd go for it.
He couldn't have set me up any better for what he just talked about in terms of assessments. I'll get to that in a moment. I do wish Dr. Hagland, or Director Hagland was present. There's questions that he has asked of us that Mr. Rezak had addressed far more eloquently than I ever could. Okay, let me hit view on this. What happened to us here, Janet?
I don't know.
It worked when we tested it earlier. I don't know, no internet. It does indicate that we have a connectivity issue.
And Sarah is here to save the day.
I can deliver it without, the graphs make it clear, but I think you've heard enough presentations of this nature from me. You'll get the gist of what I'm saying. There we go. Nope, that's not me. We're going to district, there we go. View, present. Okay. Thank you, Sarah. Okay, this presentation details the district academic achievement for the 2018-19 school year. This document details the district Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment Performance, the MCA's. The state of Minnesota uses this data for accountability purposes under the federal Every Student Succeeds Act and the state's World's Best Workforce Legislation. We use this data to measure academic programming and curriculum long-term, longitudinally. You've heard me say that before. We do not use it for individual assessment, but we're looking at patterns of how our programming is performing over time. So it's aggregate data. For this presentation, I'm going to discuss or focus on three things. First, what are our areas of success? Second, what are clear opportunities for district growth and improvement? And finally, what is a district we doing to promote that growth and improvement? So what are we doing well? What are areas for us to grow in? And what are some of the action steps that we're taking? Okay, areas of success. Okay. Our patterns of success and of opportunity are similar across each content area, math, science and reading. In each area, we continue to outperform the state, but our scores remain relatively flat, closely paralleling state performance. So if the state takes a small dip in a year, we take a small dip in a year. But we consistently outperform anywhere between five to 15 percentage points above the state depending on the content area. So, and that's uniform. It's the same pattern for each content area. Okay? I'm going to start with math. So for math proficiency, you see us continuing to outperform the state. But just as the state has taken a dip in the last couple of years, we've mirrored that, okay? Which might possibly be accounted for by changes in the exam. Anytime that they write the test, they do preview questions for the next year, and then they try those out and use them. Sometimes the test gets a little harder. Sometimes there are other factors that we can't identify. But our pattern of performance is relatively the same. Our most successful group, okay, is white uncomplicated students. Again, this is something I've shared with you in the past. White uncomplicated students are students who are self-identified as white and are not in special ed and not in poverty. At one time, this was the largest group of kids in each of our schools. But as demographics have changed over time, we now have three elementary schools where that is not the case. Students in poverty are the majority at Harrison, Garfield and Riverside. What this leads us to, even the, okay, let me back up for a moment. This pattern of performance is significant success. We consistently outperform the state in this content, or in this demographic area. And again, this pattern will show up in each content areas. We do an extremely good job of educating these students. It derives a lot of our numbers because of the size of the group in the district. But as you can see, the area for, the two areas for opportunity for us in math, and it's going to be the same in science and in reading, are going to be special ed and students in poverty. Our special ed population is about one in five students in the district. It's around 22%, plus or minus a little bit. Beginning of the school year, I don't have October 5th hard data at the moment. So with one in five students, this is not a small population. But what this is, is a population with a very large achievement gap. So this is a primary area of concern for us and opportunity for us to improve. Our students in poverty, which also have significant achievement gaps. This is the largest pool of students with an achievement gap. At 42% students of poverty in the district, that's four out of every 10 kids are students in poverty. Okay? So when you compare this to our success in the earlier demographic, it averages out to what our success against the state is. And clearly, we do well. However, these are the two primary areas in each content area that we need to show improvement and growth. These are the opportunities for us. Okay? If we were to take a look at reading, we would see exactly the same pattern. Consistent outperformance of the state, perhaps even climbing a little bit as the state drifts a little bit. Consistent outperformance. We're also looking at significantly outperforming the state with white uncomplicated students, year after year after year.
So these numbers for the special ed and free and reduced are the gap numbers?
Are the gap numbers against their own cohort. So how do these students perform against?
That's not how they actually did. It's the.
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you for clarifying. Reading, okay. For achievement gaps, again, we see exactly the same pattern playing out, even perhaps a little bit more pronounced in reading with special ed population having a slightly higher achievement gap than they did with math. These flat, relatively flat levels of performance district-wide are belied by a lot of activity that's beneath that. So when you look at a district-wide average, you're averaging 11 sites, multiple grades. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and the high school grade for math and for reading, and then the five, eight in high school test for science. So the averages can sometimes smooth out, but not reveal the churning that's going on underneath. And this is data I've shared with you in the past. If we would look at the class of 2020, we see as they've moved from third grade through 11th grade, significant variation in their performance. That same pattern is repeated throughout the other years. If we could, we can project out that the classes of 2024, 2025 and 2026 will probably follow a same pattern unless we choose to do other things than we're currently doing. One of our goals is to flatten this out. If we were to take the exact same data and then show it a slightly different way, instead of by graduation year and then include all the cohort scores, if we take a look at how each grade level is performing, now we start to see a bit more uniformity of experience, but we can start to identify areas where we probably want to target a little bit more support for what's going on. What's clear to us is some of our transition points need some attention. It is not an insignificant change to go from fourth grade to fifth grade in our district as you go from six different elementaries, perhaps seven if you came from St. Francis, into Forest View, or going from Forest View into the high school eighth to ninth. We have a significant success in moving from fourth grade to fifth grade in our language arts program. The literacy block there works very well, and the teachers have done a very good job of bridging that change. We can't say that the same success exists in the MCA data for the other content areas. And then you have the challenge of moving from eighth grade to the high school. This is a representation of exactly the same data I shared to you by graduation class. This is the fishhook slide. I've shown it multiple years in a row. And it's that we start with a very high level of performance. We identified some areas where there's transition, such as between fourth and fifth grade in math. And then we get this fraying effect where we have inconsistent performance. And then we see in eighth grade, a return to a successful pattern, and then we see a drop off a little bit in the eighth grade. Now, the thing, or 11th grade. Thing to remember there is that can be anywhere from one to two years' worth of change relative to eighth grade and the test that they take in 11th, so two to three years. Okay? So that it looks like it's the same timeframe as seventh to eighth or sixth to seventh. That, if we put. That, if we put those years in, that would flatten that line out a little bit. Okay. In reading, we see exactly the same cohort effect as we do with graduation. If we were to look at the grade levels, again, we see a relative amount of stability, a little more predictability. We don't see the, quite the same variation in grade level performance as we do in math, but there's enough there that we have work to do in making sure that our curriculum is guaranteed and viable. And you still have a form of a fishhook slide for reading. Though what you're seeing in the red line at the top in the class of 2016 is that data exits our trend line, as it will next year, the fishhook for reading is really gone. We don't have the big bump that we used to have, but we're also not trailing off as fast as we do in other content areas. So that it's, we're being more consistent, but the positive outlier that used to be there seems to be a bit more muted than it is, than it was. We can say exactly the same things about science. We mirror, we mirror the state and we significantly outperform the state as an average. When it comes to graduation, our four-year graduation rates are on a three-year uptick. This is a significant form of success. We already meet the ESSA expectations for graduation for all students. And in the next slide, it can indicate that we meet it for all students and for students in poverty. Because you have to get to the, everyone over ninety percent for graduation, then you got to get to eighty-five percent for each sub-population. We still have work to do clearly in special ed at seventy-five point five. However, that is not a bad number in comparison to the state, but it still is an area of growth for us. That's the data portion of the presentation. What I want to focus on next is what we're doing about it. How are we responding to the opportunities in front of us? For the first time in since I've been here, we have ta, we have had the administrative team come in during the summer and contribute to the creation of a district continuous improvement plan. In years past, a lot of the continuous improvement plan was really work that Ms. Anderson, the data and assessment coordinator, and myself directed with the sites specifically in their work. And there's an awful lot that the sites can do and should do. But there's another layer to what that work should look like, and that's the district-level work. That's not something that Ms. Anderson and I should be doing on our own. So this year, we had the principals involved and Superintendent Larson and Assistant Superintendent Hahn. And we identified three areas and created three teams to work on those areas. First and foremost is the use of common informative and summative assessments in supporting the work of teams such as Mr. Rezak and the Science Department in standardizing these assessments to create data that's actionable, both at the teacher level in terms of shaping instruction for all student, meeting the needs of all students, and then also at the district level. What other data other than MCA's can we triangulate here to get a profile of success? Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments are important to us, but they are not the only indicator of success of a school district. They don't answer every question. No one assessment will. So we want a pattern of success in multiple forms of data in order to have a good sense of what we're good at and where we need to grow. The second portion of the continuous improvement plan is creating a multi-tiered system of support. We called MTSS. In your years past, we called it Response to Intervention, or RTI. And the purpose of this is to track student progress and direct appropriate support to students who need it as soon as possible. This means that we're going to leverage the data generated by the formative and summative assessments in the curriculum for the purpose of identifying kids who need extra help, whether it's pre-teaching, re-teaching, whether it's a double dip, whether it's something more intrusive because it's a more significant child learning challenge for the child. But we need a system to identify where they're at relative to the standards. What we're going to specifically do for them. Give teachers landmarks so when data gives them information, they know exactly what to do and have a menu of options that allow them to use their professional expertise to fulfill the needs of that student. And by defining these things, we can systemically support them. We can budget for them, we can train for them, we can make sure that we're not trying to engage in random acts of excellence. The final thing that we're going to do is create common district-wide expectations and procedures around social-emotional learning. By including the social-emotional learning elements into what we do at the instructional level or at the building level, we can work to remove barriers to accessing instruction that some students have. We will promote engagement, stamina, as well as respect for self and for others. So if we can address some of the social-emotional needs of our students, we take away things that are distractions for them to access what's going on in core instruction. Finally, last thing, I promise, I will be updating the board periodically throughout the year as to how this work is progressing, both in its implementation and its results. And I'm open for any questions you may have.
Good information.
Okay. Thank you much for your time.
Thank you.
Now we have our action items. First up, the approval of the change in the special science biology curriculum.
I so move approval of the change to the biology curriculum.
Second.
We have a first from Director Campbell, a second from Director Blacklance. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the amended procurement management plan resolution. Superintendent Larson, will you explain that to us?
Yep, basically, if you remember earlier in the last winter, we approved the procurement plan for the school district where it, it actually was kind of a time-consuming process. And what that means is as different projects come through with the building project, what we would do is our building, our business manager and myself would approve, we could approve up to fifty thousand dollars in things that, that come about regarding our building project. Beyond that, the project oversight team could look at it and, and the, the district members on it could approve it. And then anything above a hundred thousand, we would bring forth to the Board of Education. As time's gone on, we've really realized that there's very few of those things that, that need to be brought up for approval that, that are underneath a hundred thousand dollars. And because we have committed this year to two board meetings a month, a month, we thought that it would be just as easy and probably way more timely for us to allow Marcy and myself to approve some of the smaller items, but anything beyond fifty thousand, just to bring it directly to the Board of Education meeting and have the full board address it and hear the information and make that decision. And I just think that it's going to be something that's going to make it less boggling as far as time and we'll be able to get some of the decisions made that need to be addressed by our contractors in our projects. And so because it is working so well and everything is going so well for us, I just really think that this would be something that would be very efficient for us and for us to have that additional transparency more often for the public. And so I'd recommend that we bring this forward and have the Board of Education approve this amended procurement management plan. I should say too that the change orders piece in there has not changed. The verbiage is exactly the same. That building and grounds, the director or the assistant director would give the preliminary approval and then Marcy or myself would give the final approval on any change orders that, that were in, within the amount of money that we had talked about in the past. And so that stays exactly the same. We're just trying to make the, any changes such as, an example would be when we brought forth the two opportunities for Tarazo at the new elementary school. And we also brought forth the new jam. It's just, it's a lot easier for us to bring it to the board, let the full board hear it and make the decision as a full board at the board meeting. And so we just think that all of this would go a lot, lot faster if we could do that for the full board. So I recommend approval of this.
Sounds like a good plan. More efficient. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the amended procurement management plan.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Nystrom and a second from Director Nelson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify.
It's a roll call vote, it's a resolution. So we'll need a roll call vote today.
Oh, thank you for that heads up.
You're welcome.
All righty, Janet.
Reed Campbell?
Yes.
Sue Kern?
Yes.
Ruth Nelson?
Yes.
Adam Nystrom?
Yes.
Charles Blacklance?
Yes.
All present in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Approval of the Security Resource Officer. Marcy's already coming up here to tell us all about that.
Good evening. In your packet is the School Resource Officer Agreement with the City of Brainerd. I'm just going to highlight some of the changes from last year's, or the previous two-year agreement to this one. We did define the number of days in the contract. In the services provided, we set up to one hundred and seventy-three days. And then also in the duration and cost, we defined the one hundred and seventy-three days. Another change is the city will now be providing the cell phone. In the past, we had been providing that and they are going to take that over. And the new agreement starts at seventy-five thousand and then goes up two percent, seventy-six five. We will still have the hourly services billed. There are events that the SRO covers, football games, dances. They will continue to do that and then bill us at the end of the year for those services. Did I miss anything?
No, I think you did a really nice job of summarizing it. And it does bring it much more comparable to the agreement that we have with Baxter with the School Resource Officer that we have at Forestview Middle School. And we just feel that, that this is a really fair agreement that we came to in our negotiations.
And it is all funded through our Safe Schools revenue, so not from the unassigned fund balance.
Just a question, what are the, the districts around us? Do they all have resource officers? Is it pretty standard?
In all of the districts I've been in, we've always had school resource officers.
Oh, okay.
And they were a lot smaller districts and we always had at least one full-time. So to have two full-time SRO officers, one in Baxter and one in Brainerd, I think, is very reasonable. They're, they're just phenomenal people, not only in providing the security in our buildings, but the relationships that these people develop with our kids and our families is, is just phenomenal. And I'm just so pleased with Troy and just the work that he's been doing at Brainerd High School. And, and he covers all of the schools in Brainerd if needed for any, if a child needs to be brought home or something like that, he's just right there whenever we need him. And I just think that this is an invaluable service to our schools in the city of Brainerd.
How long has he been the research shringles?
I don't know.
I want to say like seven years. I know we saw this.
I think it's longer than that. I think he was there.
Longer than that, well, it's more than that.
It's fourteen plus, he did take a little break in there, but it's more than that.
Must have been the agreement that we had at the city that that number is ringing a bell because it was just, yeah. But you'd never know that. He's just, does a phenomenal job. And he's at everything. He's at all the games, all the activities that we have. You know, he just, I think the service that, that our SRO officers provide is just, just wonderful. And so we really appreciate the agreement that we can have with our cities.
So is he paid over and above from the city than what we pay?
Yes, yes. This is just part of salary and benefits for both of our SRO officers.
Very good, is there a motion?
Also move the approval of the SRO agreement.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a first from Director Nelson and a second from Director Campbell. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, the Matrix Trust Company Agreement. Marcy, you'll explain that one.
So you're going to get a lot of names here. So we currently use PlanSource, which the trustee is TrustPoint. And we would like to switch to Further and the trustee is Matrix Trust. So our current VIBA is PlanSource. And starting January one of this year, we used Further for Flex and HSA. And we've received some really positive feedback on that transition. So we would like to switch our VIBA over to Further as well. And in order to do that, we do need this noted in the minutes that you approved the transition. So looking for approval for that, administration recommends that.
Also move the approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Nystrom, a second from Director Blacklance. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Marcy. Brainerd Public Schools Foundation report. Did you have anything tonight, Reed, with that?
Yeah, real short, but I was thinking maybe to have Jessica, could you just come up and explain? I was late for the meeting and, and just tell us about the Dream Big project that Jill presented? Jill Biorgi did? Other than that, we, I think they went over Jessica Gangl's goals and stuff and kind of presented those and talked about the upcoming homecoming run and stuff like that and the big event and all the progress and everything else is moving ahead, so. But if you could just plug that, I was kind of late, so.
Well, I'm not going to do a good as job as she did, but.
No, she was good.
The last two years, we have funded technology through our Dream Big. One was augmented reality and, what was the other one, Sarah? Virtual reality. And this year, we're leaning towards supporting classrooms with books. So the theme of the big event is C in 2020. So we want to support the district with two thousand and twenty books. So our goal, and we think that that'd be about six dollars a book, which equates to about twelve thousand dollars, give or take. So we're going to market that and give opportunities for people to donate single books, classroom sets of books to our elementary and middle school classrooms.
Very good.
So exciting.
It is.
Yeah.
And do we know when homecoming is? I don't have that in my notes at all.
Thanks, Jessica.
October first through the fifth.
October first.
Better put that in there. September, what's that?
September thirtieth.
Thirtieth through, through the fourth, or through that Friday night now this year.
Friday night game.
It's a Friday night game this year and, but the run is Saturday morning.
Sure.
So, yep. That's right, that's the fifth, Saturday the fifth.
Okay, that sounds good.
One other thing too is that on Wednesday, both Directors Nystrom and Campbell and I are going to meet, meet with the Education Foundation to talk about a MOU that we've had in the past. And if you remember, at the last meeting, we said that we were going to meet and talk about how to handle the Hall of Fame and senior scholarships and to better collaborate. Well, not better, but just to continue collaboration and maybe to look at doing things a little bit different. So we're excited about that. So we're going to sit down and continue that partnership with the foundation. And we're just so appreciative of all that they do for our school district that, that we want to really have this be a partnership focused on education.
Very good.
Thank you. One o'clock on Wednesday.
Ready, Business Service Report.
Be short and sweet. As you are aware, school started, so we will be presenting an enrollment report at the next board meeting. Get you an update there. And then I just wanted to welcome the New Buildings and Grounds Director, Reed Thiezey. He is in the audience. I'm going to point him out. We're very excited to have him and I just wanted to say welcome. It was his first day today.
Thank you.
She's stealing our thunder. So yes, it is with great excitement and we are really excited tonight to introduce to you Reed Thiezey. And he is our new Building and Grounds Director as of today. And boy, did he hit the ground running with this building project. I asked him before the meeting if he would be willing to come up and talk a little bit about his. a little bit about his background and experience and some of his hopes and dreams, uh, for, for the department and for the district as we move forward. He's a Brainerd grad, so very excited to have him.
Right, yes.
Have him coming home.
Right, that's right. Um, Superintendent Larson and, and Board of Education, thanks for having me. Um, I'm really excited to be here. Obviously, uh, I am, uh, yes, I am that family from the area, so the name is probably familiar to a lot of you. Um, I grew up in the area. I did a short stint in the Twin Cities, um, after the recession or during the Great Recession, uh, when Potlatch closed, so I spent some time down there. Um, but I was, uh, fortunate enough to come back and spend some time working for Crow Wing County prior to being here. Um, so I, I come here with about fifteen years of management in, uh, facilities and construction, and, um, I, uh, my wife is here, so our family, uh, she's also a, a member of, uh, the Brainerd School District or the teacher here, so we are a one-hundred percent, uh, school district family. Um, I'm excited to, uh, to have our, our twins. Uh, we have twin boys. They're four years old, so our future warriors are in training. Um, my first days was busy. Uh, I got to spend a lot of time with Jeff, and I've been around visiting the projects and learning what is going on around the district, learning the operations. It's a little bit different than, uh, um, the county's operations. Obviously, we're not, we don't operate jails and sheriff's offices here, but, uh, we do have a lot of buildings and a lot of square footage to cover, so, uh, familiar with all of that as well. So looking to seeing how we do things here, um, and how I can bring some great ideas in as well. So I'm excited for that. Um, again, I said I've been around, I've been meeting with the principals and some of the other key staff. Um, I'm gonna have meetings scheduled with them just to, uh, do a little meet and greet and, uh, tour the spaces and hear some of their great ideas and see how we might partner up with a lot of that. So, um, as I get more familiar with the operations, I'll be back in front of you with, uh, uh, some of the things that I have in mind. So, uh, thanks for having me. I'm really excited to be here and, uh, looking forward to a lot of the great things we can accomplish together. So, any questions you have for me?
You're gonna look into solar, right?
To solar? Sure, absolutely. Yep, no, we can definitely take a look at that.
Yep. Got another email on that today, so that's good.
Yep, I did see some emails floating around as well. So, yep, I believe, uh, Scott's been talking with, uh, uh, some of the local utilities here, so we'll definitely continue those conversations, so.
Today Reed and, and Jeff and Cory, Brandon and myself, um, we talked a lot about the fact that we're trying to get our emergency manuals up to date again and for, to bring them forward for approval and to, um, make sure that they align with the building projects the way they are this year, because we know they're gonna be different every year for the next three years until we finally know exactly what our, uh, safety and security needs to look like through the district. And just had a great meeting today about planning for this big meeting that we're going to have on the seventeenth, and, uh, just listening to his vision for, for the district and, uh, how we're gonna do this building project. And, um, just thanking Earl for a job well done to this point, to get it to this point, and helping to train Reed. We're, we're just really thrilled to, we just believe we have the, the greatest team possible for, for something this extensive. So we're happy to have you here.
A lot of the pieces are in place, and they've done a great job so far, and I just look to continue that on, so, absolutely.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you for having me. Yep, thank you.
Thanks, man.
Yep.
Very good.
Superintendent's report. Old Reed and young Reed.
Yeah.
Is that how you wanted referred to? Yeah. I said it was Reed squared, too. Yeah, which one are we talking about right now? So I just have a few little things. Um, one, I just wanna thank everyone again for the wonderful groundbreaking that we had last week. Thank you to the board for being there, to Andrea, to Cory, to, uh, Brian for speaking at it, for, uh, everyone for being there. Dave, it's good, it was good to see you there there the other day as well. And once again, it's, the, the sun just was shining, wasn't it?
It was a beautiful day.
Yeah.
Couldn't have been a more beautiful day. And so thank you to everyone, and, and here we go with, uh, another great big project. And as Brandon so eloquently said, now we move into phase two. Um, seems like we've been into it for a while, but we're gonna do the same work that we've been doing up to this point with Lowell, with Garfield, Riverside, and also the Early Childhood Center. So thank you to everyone for your part with that. Um, I also, um, talking about Earl just a little bit, I'd like everyone to know that we're gonna have a retirement get-together for him on Thursday, September twenty-sixth, right here in the boardroom from three o'clock on. And so we invite everyone to come and thank him for a job very well done in the district and, uh, wish him the best in his retirement. Um, the last thing that I have is, uh, I've been, I've had the fortunate opportunity this past week to get into every one of the buildings, I think. And, um, but I've been able to do, I, I found a book, uh, before school started called, called The School's First Day of School. And so it's about a kindergarten class coming into a brand-new school, and it's just been so pertinent. And so Janet has done a nice job of scheduling me into kindergarten classrooms to, uh, read this book to our kindergarteners and to welcome them into our district as well. And so, uh, with that being said, I just wanna welcome everyone back. I know that school year two thousand nineteen twenty is gonna be a fabulous year, and, um, together we make a difference in the lives of kids. And so it's gonna be a wonderful year. Thanks.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Our next regular school board meeting is September twenty-third, and lunch with Lane on the twenty-sixth.
Yep. Guess what the theme is? Underkid Struction. Every one of them is here, yep.
You'll have fun with that.
Yep, it'll be super fun.
And if there be no other business, um, if somebody wants to motion for adjournment?
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
First from Campbell, second from Nystrom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.